Welcome, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order at 4:01 PM. Adoption of the agenda.
The West Elgin Council hereby adopts the special meeting agenda of June 5th, 2025 as presented.
A mover, please. Deputy Mayor Talley? Seconded. councillor Denning? All in favour? That's carried. Disclosure of any pecuniary interest? Seeing none? We go to four. Public meeting. Fill in the seat of councillor Ward Three.
So each applicant will be provided up to five minutes to speak, followed by a maximum of two questions per member of council, per applicant. So council will go into closed session to discuss the individuals, and they will make a selection at today's meeting, followed by the appointment at the next regular meeting of council on June 12th, 2025, at 4 o'clock PM.
Okay. Applicants received.
So applicant number one was Trevor Lee, and unfortunately, he withdrew his name as he is unable to attend today's meeting. So we'll move to applicant number two, Philip Sousa.
Welcome, Philip. If you don't mind putting your mic on. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr Mayor, council members, staff, residents of Clacken, Rodney, West Lauren, Eagle, New Glasgow, Port Glasgow, and all of the smaller hamlets of West Elgin. I stand you, I stand before you today to promise you that if selected, I will fight to bring unity in our community, to bring forth strong, open communication, and share the one thing we all love the most, and that's West Elgin. We need respect, kindness, and dedication. We need to stand tall, come together, and tear down walls, not build them. Through my work, I currently serve on not one committee, but multiple, such as the Rodney Town Hall, Economic Development Committee, the Roots and Revival Festival, West Elgin ATV Club, and also working with and supporting the West Elgin Women in Business. Being a part of these committees, I have shown to be reliable and dedicated, not afraid to take time out of my day to be there when needed. I have never quit at anything in my life, and I can promise you that with me, you have a lifetime partner in West Elgin. Together, we must fight many things, but let's not forget our local seniors, rising cost of living, rent, and housing. Last but not least, let's remember to respect our precious assets, such as our rich farmland, our rich history, our waterfronts, our parks, and everything else that makes West Elgin truly unique. It would be my honour and gratitude if this council would be willing to have me join their team, and together we can learn and grow from each other. Most of all, do great things for West Elgin. I thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to just a few questions?
Yeah.
If you don't mind?
For sure.
And I think I'll start off, I've just have one question.
Yeah.
And most meetings that we have are at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Is it possible that you can attend most of those meetings?
Definitely. I take time out of my day. I think it's very important to attend the meetings, and I think it's vital. You have to be here, you have to understand, this is your livelihood. Learn, to grow. I mean, you want to understand how things pass, how things come to, and then work together and understand it.
Thank you. councillor Denning, can I ask you?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through the chair. Thank you, Philip. How do you feel is the best way for council to support and accommodate future growth for new families, while at the same time being mindful of the existing families and the asset versus the liability of that growth accommodation?
I think we need to find a balance. I think we need the right kind of balance. I need, we need homes. We need, we need the right kind of homes. I don't know if tiny homes is the right answer, but we need to find that balance. We need to fight against the rising cost of rent. I think there should be a cap on rent, or like, if it's possible, I don't know the laws, but we need to come together and find a solution.
Thank you very much.
Okay. councillor Statham, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And through you, Philip, thanks for being here. That was, sorry, that was great. I have one question. You mentioned in your, in your speech, standing tall.
Yeah.
And I agree, very much so. I think that sometimes councils faced with decision-making that may not necessarily be popular with one group, but may be necessary for another. So my question is, how would you approach a situation where public demand exceeds or is outside of what council or the municipal staff is able to accommodate?
Very good question. That's a tough one. Um, you have to, I guess you have to listen to your heart. You have to try to do what's right for the community, the best for the future of West Elgin. And sometimes that's not what everybody likes to hear. But council has to make decisions that's the best for our community. And the public puts their trust in us, they vote for us, and they put their faith in us.
Yep. A further question?
Can I ask one more?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My next question, Philip, I just wanted if, I wondered if you could tell me how you feel about transparency? What does transparency mean to you? And in, how would you go about practicing that if you were to sit at this table? Thank you.
Another good question. Transparency, it's a tough one. And I understand there's closed meetings, and there's lojalties. You cannot let the public know about certain things, but it's very important to realize that some of these things affect people's livelihood, and you have to find a middle ground sometimes. Sometimes council needs to come together and say, hey, this is important for the community to know. As a group, we decide that.
Thank you, Philip.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Talley, please.
Thank you, through the chair. Uh, thank you for putting your name in again for this appointment. And I had a little more about, you were talking about assets in our community, exactly what we have here in the community. So what would you consider, if you could pick one of our greatest assets in West Elgin, and why? Why is it the greatest asset that, for the community? What does it do? Does it bring people together? Why is that?
We have many assets, but I think one of the greatest assets is Port Glasgow Trailer Park. I think with all the pushback, the fight through the year, I think in the end, it's going to bring us all together. I think it's a very special asset. I think it's, it brings the community together.
Okay, thank you. And then I have another question, a second question. Um, so we do have closed meetings. People will ask us things. There may be something we may have had in a closed meeting. How do you work when someone, like, what would you say when someone's trying to ask you information and you can't give it? What was your, what's your one line, or what is the way you're going to deal with that? So you're not disclosing something that has been dealt with in a closed meeting or something that may be up and coming that we're not allowed to divulge yet?
I would hope someone would understand the legal aspects of it, and I hope they understand that cannot be discussed. What stays behind closed doors has to stay behind closed doors.
Okay, thank you so much. Once again, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We go to the next one.
Uh, the third candidate is Joseph Seaman, and unfortunately, Mr Seaman has not arrived to the council chambers yet. Uh, so we will move on to the fourth candidate, who is Terry Lynn Fletcher.
Welcome, Terry Lynn.
You say I'm loud enough, I don't need a mic. Um, hi, everybody.
Yeah. If you'll just carry on, that'll be fine, thank you.
Um, I'm not a big public speaker, that's why I haven't really went into politics. Um, I was more of a singer than a speaker, and I'm, would uh, went more into comedy, except for I was scared to speak in public, so that didn't work out for me. Um, the reason why I've wanted to help out with council and seen the vacancy is, um, I've always helped out volunteer-wise. Um, when my kid was young and was involved in a lot of sports, and he was, um, he is a figure skater and has went a long ways with figure skating. I, um, always helped out in, in everything that my child was involved in. I always thought, well, if your kid was doing something, you helped out, and that's what you did. That's what my parents taught us to do, and, and that's kind of what I've always done with my life. And, um, so I was always busy with Paxton all my life until he could go off on his own. And now I have the time to do something to help, and I want to help. And I see you guys are struggling, and so I thought I'd have the time now, I could step up and help you out. So that's what I kind of want to do. And I've lived in Rodney since I was seven years old, and I've seen the changes in Rodney since I was seven years old, and seen the changes in the storefronts, and in tourism, and in industry. And, and my parents have had a large business in Rodney, which they've retired from. And I think I have that knowledge that I could pass on and help with things in my community. And I've seen it from Albro, which was an awful word to learn to spell when you were seven years old, changed to West Elgin. And I think I have that history that I could help you guys with. And I hate talking about myself, but that's what I thought I could offer. Plus, I've owned my own business, stuff like that. And I'm starting up another business that, you know, that I would like to maybe have a storefront with eventually, once it gets going. And that's about it, about me. I use humor for a lot of things, but I am serious too. And you can ask me questions if you want.
Thank you very much for that. I'll, I'll give you the same question that I, that I gave to the first candidate. Most of the meetings we have are at 4:00 PM in the afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
And is it possible that you can get time to come to those meetings?
I'm here all the time, so yes, I can make every meeting.
councillor Denning, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through the chair. Hi, Terry.
Hello.
So as you mentioned, your family, um, for many, many years, have been, um, really key industrial components.
Yes.
West Elgin. Um, and with industry taking place so close to residential neighborhoods, as was the case with your family business, there's occasionally, um, conflict when it comes to residential versus industry. As recently as, as this year, we've had to navigate some of those, uh, some of those issues. How would you, as a councillor, help us to negotiate those sorts of conflicts in the future?
Hmm, that's a tough one. Um, I think we'd have to bring in the right people to negotiate those kind of conflicts. I don't think we could totally do that on our own, you know? I think you have to bring in, like, I know with the factory now, to the, um, there is conflict there as with the house that was built by Fordham's there. There has been conflict from the gentleman that works in, or that lives in that house. There has been conflict because my son works at that factory. And there even has been conflict from that gentleman there with the sounds from the, uh, press machines in there. Um, there was, um, I don't know if you guys have heard that, but there has been, um, anger issues from him, from the trucks. Um, and I know they must have dealt with that with the police and stuff on their own. Um, but there is going to be complaints with stuff like that. You, you can't always please everyone. I'm sorry, you can't, but industry has to come. We have to have it. We have to have jobs to bring people in. We do have to have that. So I'm sorry, some people are just not always going to be pleased, but you have to have jobs to have a community.
Thanks, Terry. Uh, no further questions? Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Statham, please.
Hi, Terry.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me. Um, in, in your letter and in your speech, you mentioned revitalizing, uh, tourism.
Yes, tourism was big when I was young.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and, and bringing development back to the downtowns.
Yes.
And, and I 100% agree with you, I think that's vital.
When I was young, you didn't have to leave, um, the area. There was lots of shops to shop from. You did not have to go to London or Chatham or anywhere to buy anything. You could buy it right here.
And now we go to Costco.
Right.
Um, so my question is this. How do you balance revitalizing tourism, downtown development, filling those storefronts? How do you balance that with a respecting rural identity?
Mm-hmm.
Which is so critical to me?
Mm-hmm.
And maintaining fiscal responsibility and balancing the budget at the end of the year?
That's tough. That is a big question. That is a lot to ask. Um, um, I think it can be done. I really do. I think we can respect everyone. I do think that we could bring back tourism and bring back the shops, and respect everyone in every situation. If we do it, it was done before, so I think we can do it again. I really do. I do. I really do think that we can do it again. It was done with respect before. I think we can do it with respect again. I really do. I tourism, tourism brings in people that want to do things here and want to spend money here. It still will bring in the people that want to live here, the people that want to farm here, will be still be respected. People, and with that Roots and Revival thing, that is awesome. I think we can build on that. That was brilliant. Whoever came up with that was brilliant. I think we can build on that as well. I think we can make Rodney West Lauren stand out. I think we can make it stand out on the map that people want to come here and see what we're doing. I really do. I think we could have a big billboard sign saying, look, this is where you want to be.
Great, thank you, Terry. Um, that's all I have.
Is that? Okay. deputy mayor Talley, please.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for putting your name in and being here today. Uh, Terry, seeing your bio and also when you're speaking about how you volunteer in the community for many years.
Yeah.
Um, what could you take from that time and the efforts you've had for your volunteerism in the community? And what skill would you bring to council from that, those times?
Um, when I took, uh, when I volunteered at the state skating club, I just jumped into it. I didn't know the lingo or anything, and, um, I got kind of dumped into president mode, uh, because our president quit, and there was warning signs. Kind of like what's happening with the park thing now, the park down there. Um, I didn't know what I was getting into. It was a mess. Um, and we were having, holding a competition that year. Um, it was awful. And I had to take over, I had to get these people to work together. And I had no idea what I was doing. And I had to come together and get everyone to work together, pull this, um, big competition off, like, run it. Um, I would, like, the only thing I signed up for was helping with Carnival. I, I had no, I, like, I had a little kid, you know, I didn't know. And somehow, I made it work, and it was a big success. I think it was a big learning curve for me. Um, and we went on to make things better and better and better and better. Um, I think that with that experience, and my parents always taught me, you leave things better than it was given to you. That's kind of my motto in life, you know? So I think that's what I would say my answer would be. I want to leave things better than it was given to me.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And thank you once again for all your volunteering you've done.
Thank you.
councillor Statham, you've got something else to say?
Yeah, thank you. Just turn it off, sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, can I ask one more follow-up?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Oh, thank you.
Hit me.
Um, yeah, I'll try not to. Um, you just, I just, what, um, the, we were just talking about there, about dealing with a situation where you had, you know, one group of people and another group of people that are in disagreement. And I just wondered, um, how would you help council to navigate disagreement or division in a productive way? How would you help us as a group manage those situations?
I always tried to take a pause. That's what I've learned with mental health with my son. I try to take a pause, listen. I mean, not every time you're perfect, you're only human, but take a pause, try to listen. Um, listen to what everybody's saying. There's truth in everybody. Everybody just wants to be hurt. Even if they're yelling, they want to be hurt. Try to, you know, listen to both sides. There's always more than one side. Try to listen to it, take pieces of it, try to make the best decision you can. That's all you can do in life.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for listening.
We just got water all over.
Terry? We have no option but go. Okay. We're going to take just a five-minute break. Okay, we're going to start again, and right away, we're going to go into a closed session.
Uh, we'll just note for the record that, uh, we do not have Joseph Seaman, Austin Vanderburgh, or Jonathan Wolfe in attendance today. So the recommendation to move it into closed is that West Elgin Council hereby move into closed session at 4:32 PM pursuant to the municipal act, section 239-2B, being personal matters about identifiable individuals to discuss personal information about the candidates and express opinions about the individual candidates.
Moved, please. Deputy Mayor Talley? Seconded. councillor Statham? All in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Okay. So we re, report from closed? And Terry, it's over to you, please.
So we're reporting from closed session at 4:50 PM. Council proceeded into closed session to discuss personal matters about identifiable individuals, Ward Three applicants. Council reviewed all applications of those in attendance and those who were absent today.
Okay. Looking around us, from our meeting and discussions, has anyone got a motion? councillor Denning?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, uh, through the chair. I do have a motion. I'd like to make the motion to nominate, uh, Mr Philip Sousa um, to be our new Ward Three councillor.
Would we have a second for that? That's deputy mayor Talley. So let's speak on it. Conversations. Yes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So certainly, um, I was, um, I was very, very pleased to hear, uh, from, um, the candidates who were here, and, uh, I think that, uh, one of the important jobs of, uh, being a councillor is, uh, being able to speak during times of nervousness. And this is definitely one of those, those moments where I have no doubt that it was nervous for, for both of you. So thank you to both of you for stepping up and being here. So anyway, um, I, I felt that, uh, Mr Sousa, um, spoke, um, certainly with a little bit more confidence. And, 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 and that was, uh, to me, the, uh, the thing that made me feel like I wanted to support him as, as our candidate for Ward Three. So Terry, again, thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it.
He is a good speaker.
He is a good speaker. He certainly, he certainly proved that today. So that is my, uh, my reasoning or justification for my, uh, motion, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, councillor Statham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I, I just wanted to say, again, I appreciate both of you being here. I'm, I'm very pleased to have people come in, and, and you guys both did a phenomenal job. Thank you. Um, for, for me, what, um, I think, um, what this decision comes down to is, uh, a certain level of commitment, uh, to the municipality and, and, and being here. And I've noticed that, um, um, Philip has been sitting in attendance at every, uh, every council meeting for the last six months, just about, a number of boards, a number of committees. Um, and to me, that's all volunteer. So, you know, I, I get paid not very much to sit here, and you sat there without being paid. So I do appreciate that, um, and it's noticed, so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Talley?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair. Um, yeah, so we had, this is the third time we've been going through this. Um, and we've heard a lot of people speak, and a lot of people from their heart and their voice about how much we love West Elgin. I've lived here for 24 years. Um, it's home. And I can see when you both speak, it's home. It doesn't matter how long you've lived here, lived here for three months, or 30 plus, I won't say how many years, Terry. 52, okay, she said 52 years. And, um, you both have a heart for our community as our council, and you, uh, take it seriously, working and doing your volunteerism in our community. I thank you for that. But so, a clear choice is, uh, a person that has just been doing it, uh, a little more often and a little more recent. And, um, when there's conflict in the community, uh, he is there, uh, speaking about it and on it, and trying to get people to rise up and rise to the occasion instead of beating others down. So I appreciate that, and, uh, look forward to having a full five council again, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'd like to say thank you to both of you. And you can believe me, we discussed both of you at length. And I don't want you to be discouraged in any way, shape, or form. And the election is not too far away, and I think it's time to step forward and let the public decide. So I would keep that in mind, and, um, you did a good job, and, uh, I, I thank you for coming. And, uh, okay, so we're going to go for a yes.
We've got a mover and second.
And we, I've sung, we've, we've had a mover and second, and now I want to vote on it. All in favour?
Can we have a recorded vote?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah. councillor Statham, we'll start with you.
Uh, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Talley?
Yes.
councillor Denning?
Yes.
And Mayor Leitham?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. And congratulations. And congratulations. Okay, so we go to the confere, confirmary bylaw.
That bylaw, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings at the special meeting of council held on June fifth, twenty twenty-five, be read a first, second, third, and final time.
Mover, please. Counselor Statham, seconded. Deputy Mayor Tellier, all in favor. That's carried. And that takes us to adjournment.
That the council of the municipality of West Elgin hereby adjourn the special meeting of council at four fifty-six P M. To meet again at four o'clock P M. on Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, or at the call of the chair.
Mover, please. Counselor Statham, seconded. Counselor Denny, all in favor. That's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.